I will call it over the August 15th work regular meeting for the Board of Commissioners if everybody would stand for the presentation of colors.
Color Guard, hold. Left, face. Present, color.
Please join us in saying our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Right, face. Forward, march.
This time I call on Pastor Orville Threek from the Miami Baptist Church for the invocation.
Our fathers, we call upon that name that's above every name, your son and our Savior. We're grateful for this time that we can come before this Board of Commission, Lord, in this county that you have richly blessed, and pray God that you help them to make the right decisions tonight to do those things to bring glory and honor to your name. Thank you for these in attendance. I pray God you bless each individual person, each individual commission, and every item of business may be done for the glory of God, and we thank you for all that you do for us in Jesus' name. Amen.
This time I call on the Central Cabarrus High School Air Force Junior ROTC. If y'all would come forward and introduce yourself, and if you would then go to my right, your left, Commissioner Burridge has a pen for you if you're able, if you would like to have one.
I'm Cadet First Lieutenant Ryan Ellis. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Cadet Master Sergeant R. Torell Soto, and I am the Color Guard Commander here.
I'm Cadet Staff Sergeant Ashley Haas, and I'm the Assistant Color Guard Commander.
I am Cadet Major David Morris, and I am the Commander of the Kitty Hawk Air Society.
Hi, I'm Cadet Senior Airman Sarah Robinson, and I do Color Guard and Drill Team.
Thank you. Now, we have before us the minutes for, let's see here, minutes for June 20th and July 5th. We have a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Do we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have the agenda before us that includes some additional information on page 642, which is the, well, was the minutes that we have. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is under C1 is a recognition and presentation from the Cabarrus Sustainability Council. Presentation of the 10-second rule. At this time I call on Mrs. DeKita Vanderburg-Johnson.
Thank you. It's a great privilege to present to you what's happening with the Cabarrus Sustainability Council. I'm DeKita Vanderburg-Johnson. I'm President of Southgate Maestery and Lumber, and have the privilege of being the Chairman this year of the council. I thought the best way to bring you up to date with what was going on was to actually do the PowerPoint that we present throughout the county to Rotary Clubs, pretty much anyone that'll listen, homeowners associations, anyone that we can get the message out. And our message that we are presenting is the 10-second rule. Our mission for Cabarrus Sustainability Council is to promote sustainability through public and private collaboration, and that's exactly how it was formed in 2009 with the efforts of John Dayar County Manager, the Cabarrus Regional Chamber, Cabarrus Economic Development, as well as Brian Hyatt and Mike Legg, the City Managers of Concord and Kannapolis, thought that this would be a great idea, and we started, we got together in 2009. We had maybe 15 to 20 people who would come, and we finally grew to about 25, 30 on average. And we finally figured out that we needed to have a cause. We needed to have something quantitative at the end of the year that we could say that we actually did. So last year, under Chairman Ian Prince, we developed a recycling program that was collaborated between City of Kannapolis Schools, as well as Cabarrus County Schools, an education program that brought it to the attention of students, hopefully that it would have gone home to the parents, and then we facilitated a pickup program with this. So it's still going on today. Well, at the first of this year, when I took the reins, we thought air quality was something we needed to address. Well, it took us three months to figure out just how nebulous air quality was, and I thought, what have I gotten myself into? But we finally, with the help of the Center for the Environment at Catawba College, as well as Sheila Armstrong there, we were able to hone it down and make it a no idling program. So we go into a meeting, and we start talking about how it once was, 25, 30 years ago, when we can remember. We walked to school, we ate together, we had family dinners at home, we walked to work or we rode with friends. I can remember my mom, growing up in Union County, and carpooling all the way to Kannapolis to work in Cannon Mills. That's how it was done then. Today, we drive our children to school. Some of us have two or three children at two or three different schools, and what do we do? We drive them to all three schools. We eat in our car, breakfast, lunch, and sometimes dinner on the way to football practice or a music lesson. We commute to work individually. So as this has become our norm, air quality suffers, and we suffer. A study by the American Lung Association utilizing federal air quality monitors located near the Roan-Babaree County line indicate that our two-county area is the 17th worst in the nation for ground-level ozone pollution. That's why we chose air quality and why we chose idling, no idling. As a businessperson, I've become concerned about what happens with economic development when we have a company who's wanting to come here to Cabarrus County, and many large corporations are asking the questions, what does your county do in their sustainable efforts? And when we see this, New York City is not even on the list, which is kind of amazing. And a lot of people ask the question of, why does this happen? And a lot of it is our proximity, the mountains on one side, which doesn't allow the air to disperse, and just a lot of it has to do with climate control. So for one thing, we have to do even more to make up for the situations that we can't do anything about. And now I always tell people that I can't get very technical with this. We have been trained just enough to be dangerous, but ground-level ozone is formed when you have sunlight, nitrogen oxides, and volatile organic compounds, or VOCs. These things bake together, and we certainly experienced that over the last couple of months, when how many, they told us this morning, I couldn't remember how many code orange ozone days that we've had. So we've certainly experienced this, and that is what causes our ozone pollution. So we created the 10-second rule. Turn off your engine after 10 seconds of idling. It saves money, and it can eventually save lives. And when we talk about ozone and the idling, the ozone season is just like an allergy season. It runs from March until October, seven months out of the 12. We have an ozone pollution day, or season, which means we've got to do something to make sure that we can survive through all that. What is idling? An idling vehicle is one whose engine is running when it is parked or not in use, not when you're sitting at the stoplight. We aren't advocating anything like that. But most people idle their vehicles when they're warming up the car, waiting for someone, personal comfort, I've been tempted, trust me, the last little while, and for convenience. According to the experts, more than 10 seconds of idling can use more fuel than turning off the engine and restarting it. Excessive idling is hard on your engine, and the best way to warm up a vehicle is to drive it. It only takes 30 seconds of idling on winter days to warm a fuel-injected engine. Now, that does not mean that your heater has warmed up. It means your engine has warmed up. So RCC's business writing class helped us develop this PowerPoint. They also conducted a survey through the students, as well as the faculty there at RCC. Who would most influence you not to idle your vehicle? The commissioners? Hmm. Media? No. An organization such as the Cabarrus Sustainability Council? No, doesn't mean anything. The mechanic is the one that they listen to, which we found kind of interesting. We didn't expect that. The question is asked, do you know a poorly tuned engine uses up to 15% more energy when idling than a well-tuned vehicle? Also, I have to tell Steve, my husband, about this. Avoiding high speeds on 85 and rapid acceleration when first driving your vehicle reduces fuel usage. In a diesel engine, idling actually lowers the coolant temperatures. Then we look back once again to 25, 30 years ago, when we first learned to drive, what were we told by our parents or by the instructor? Don't turn your car on and off, even though you think that's cool, because you'll wear out the battery, you'll wear out the starter, or you'll waste gas. Today, every passenger vehicle engine uses electronic ignition, so those things are no longer. And we continue to hear that as we do these presentations. Well, you know, I thought that was bad for the starter. Well, anyhow, we dispel those myths. And what problems does idling cause? This is something that we want, because if you can talk to people about health issues, a lot of times they'll get the message. Idling pollutes the air, harms health in ways such as asthma, heart disease, chronic bronchitis, and cancer. A number of runners are on our council, and they'll talk about, sometimes in the summer when we have a meeting, that, boy, I was out for a run this morning, and it was tough, just trying to breathe. So we ask, what can you do? Turn off your ignition if you're waiting for more than 10 seconds. Warm up your engine by driving it, not by idling it. And protect your car engine by idling less. And think about all the places that we idle. Banks, pharmacy, school line, where else? Anybody else think of anything else? Also, when you come up in your driveway and you're still on your phone, and you continue talking with your car going, and you're in your driveway, and your husband pulls up and he says, I thought you were Chairman of Sustainability Council, and you're not supposed to idle. So I got busted. But you need to get involved. One way that you can get involved, and this is always one of my little fun things, have you ever gotten anything free from the state? Anybody gotten anything free from the state? No? You can get a sign just like this, free from the state. So that dispels that as well. One of the things that we're doing this year is trying to have goals. The state does give this for free. The only thing that they want to know is where you're going to put it. We have them at Cabarrus Bank, we have them, in fact, out at the Wyancoff Farmers Market. As you drive in, there's one. Southgate has three now, and you can get these, put them up, or we can even arrange for some of our council people to put them up for you. Like I say, we have them in the office, and anyone who needs these, even if you see a place where there's idling going on, and you think, oh, I'm working on it with F and M right now, trying to get those put, you know, along with them, but free from the state. We want to educate family, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and others about no idling benefits. You can join the Cabarrus Sustainability Council. You don't have to join it, you just show up for the meetings first Tuesday of the month in the Chamber Board Room from 9:00 a.m. until 10:00. Typically, we have speakers. We've just gotten involved with a lot of different folks, getting to know a lot of people who have initiatives that can really enlighten us, posting the no idling sign at businesses, schools, daycares in particular, and government buildings. You can also visit the campaignforcleaneair.org for air quality information, and we also give thanks to RCC for helping us with this. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Vanderburg-Johnson?
I've got a question. If someone's interested in getting signs for their business or a building, who do they contact?
Samantha Moose at Cabarrus Economic Development. And in fact, our goal is 100 signs. We have placed 53. So we, in fact, Wayside, I forgot, Chris has them at Wayside. We are also trying to speak to 35. There are about seven or eight of us. In fact, we're getting ready to train a couple more people on doing our little spill, our little PowerPoint, and we certainly want, you know, if anyone has any opportunities for us to, you know, give our presentation, like I say, I've gone through this quickly. I did Afton's Rotary a few weeks ago, and they were so engaged that it was just like a, I talk, they talk. I mean, it was just a conversation, so it was very interesting how their take on this and how involved they got with the presentation. So we've, our goal is 35 speeches throughout the county. By December 31st, we've done 15. So we're continuing to work on that.
Commissioner Ruth, did you have a question?
Have ways to, you know, you being here tonight, I mean, publicize this more about churches and stuff like that, the church groups and a lot to get in touch.
Absolutely. And we thought, particularly homeowners associations and speakers. But we've done Rotaries. In fact, Kevin Grant and I presented to a group, and I can't remember the name, with Mecklenburg County, air quality, and had a discussion with them, and we did the presentation as well for them. So just a number, any place that we have an audience that has a, you know, going to lend our ear.
Has it been difficult implementing it in your business?
You know, I thought it would be really tough in winter, but I have noticed it more in summer, that people pull up, particularly at the back. You know, and you don't want to, it's a double-edged sword. You don't want to offend a customer, but you know, you're thinking, oh, you need to turn off your truck, especially diesel trucks that are sitting there. But my guys, I've told them, and you know, they have, they've listened quite well, so far as our actual drivers, they don't have a choice.
And you talked about the Center for the Environment. How was that? I mean, I know that's been around for a while, but a lot of people don't know about all that Catawba College is doing and helping.
It is truly an amazing facility, even to the nature walk that they have. I think it's about a three-mile walk that's part of the Salisbury Trail. And Sheila Armstrong in particular works very closely with air quality, and she's in fact initiated some air quality through Davidson College that's being done right here, in fact. Dawn Grant, who's one of our frequent attendees, just comes to our meetings because she's a concerned citizen. She's a stay-at-home mom, and you know, but she's out, in fact, they placed air monitors in subdivisions throughout Cabarrus County and Mecklenburg, particularly Davidson, and just to monitor those, and we should have some of those results by our next meeting, which will give an idea, not just, you know, the federal monitor on the Roan-Babaree line, but what's happening in our actual, you know, subdivisions.
And last, you mentioned also that your last year's goal was trying to get more of recycling effort on with children.
Correct.
And you said that's going pretty well. What are efforts, is that, what are you doing with those efforts?
Those, it was actually implemented into the, both Cabarrus County and Kannapolis City. There was an education program that went hand-in-hand with curriculum, and then Ian was able with a number of people with Cabarrus County and Kannapolis City from the maintenance side, they coordinated the efforts for recycling, for pickup, and making sure, for instance, it was prior to Kannapolis having their recycling program. So it was a little bit, you know, dicey trying to get all that worked out, but now all those schools have particular pickup for cardboard, for, you know, the cans, and for bottles, and what have you. And our focus was the fact that if we got the children educated, they would go home and in turn educate the parents, and so that was a very popular program. And like I say, the pickup of the recycling materials continues even now.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Next we have is informal public comments. I have one card, and that's from Mr. Crutchfield. If you'll please come up, introduce yourself, and let us know what you want to talk about for three minutes.
Proudly, Price Crutchfield. I've been banned from the Whataburger for life. I can't go to any Whataburger's for the rest of my natural life. Let me tell you what happened. I was in the Whataburger communicating a message to a fellow citizen. There were about five or six people in there, along with a retired police officer with the Concord Police Department. His name was Ron Green. Again, his name was Ron Green. Anyway, I was telling this person about, down in Columbia, South Carolina, a terrible debacle that unfolded whereby they were, the authorities were looking for this police officer for a couple of years for molesting kids. And, you know, the person I was talking to seemed very receptive, and nobody else seemed to be upset about what I had to say, except Ron Green, a retired Concord Police Officer. He came over to me in the gist of my conversation, uninvited, and he said, I know my boss, the owner of the Whataburger. I'm going to get you banned from the Whataburger. I'm thinking, what for? For talking about public record? Anyway, so he walks out, and as he walks out the door, he says, I'm around. I don't know what that means, but I'm around. Well, anyway, he made a statement to one of the ladies that worked there at the Whataburger that I am the police. She said, do you want me to call the police? And Ron Green, a retired Concord Police Officer, I believe he was in the reserves or something now, he said, I am the police. Anyway, a couple of days later, I had a peaceful little vigil out in front of the Whataburger, a little picketing of the Whataburger, and I wanted people to know why I was ejected from the Whataburger. My boss came out, destroyed my personal property, and poked his finger in my chest, and he said, if you don't like it, go take out a warrant. So I went and took out a warrant. I did what he told me to do. Well, that's been two months ago, and the police have not served a warrant. It seems that in Concord, if the police are your buddies, you don't get warrants served on you. You know, I got arrested and was charged with trying to start a riot, and I never harmed a soul. Lesser standards of arrest for me. I believe they call that social stratification. But again, Ron Green with the Concord Police Department, he said, I am with the police. He's the one that said, I know my boss, I'm going to have you banned from the Whataburger. And all I was doing was telling this guy about, down in Columbia, South Carolina, they were chasing this police officer for molesting kids. Now, you know, for my part, I'm concerned, and if I can't speak out about these things without being told that I have to leave the Whataburger by the police, coincidentally, it was the same police, Concord Police, that lied on me in court, under oath to Judge Hamby. Told Judge Hamby that I came into restaurants and harassed his family, lied under oath. That guy's name, oh, I guess I'm out of time. God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. Crutchfield. Next matter we have is under old business, is update on the qualified school construction bonds for QSCAB's projects, Kannapolis City Schools. And I call on Mr. Crabtree. Would you like to come on up? We already received a report from Cabarrus County School Systems. I don't have, okay, just one mic short, and I didn't miss anybody. Mr. Crabtree.
Thank you, thank you. Just want to give you an update on the qualified school construction bonds for Kannapolis City. First of all, I want to talk about the four areas that we're using to qualify school construction bonds for. The major area would be mechanical and electrical projects ranging from complete replacement of HVAC systems to additions of controls to changing of light fixtures. The second project would be roof replacement, replacing an entire roof at one of our schools, Kannapolis Intermediate. Third project would be civil engineering, adding two parking lots at an elementary school and a high school. And the third, fourth project would be some architectural work at an elementary school. We're in the process now of negotiating the contracts for the mechanical and electrical engineers and the roofing engineers, which make up the biggest portion of our bonds. Our bonds are about 3.6 million. Those make up well over 3 million of the bonds. I'm aware that we do have to meet a 10% obligation before, I think sometime in October, when we finalize those contracts, hopefully in the next week, we will be over our 10% obligation, and very happy about that. Meeting with the civil engineer week after next, finalize their contract, and we'll probably hold off the architecture for a while since it's the smallest amount on our Going back to the HVAC, we hope to even possibly have a project bid out before our obligation amount, so not only will we meet our 10%, I think we'll be well over our 10% obligation by that time. That's kind of a quick update where we're at. I'll just ask if anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Crabtree?
Do you have any preliminary estimates, more specific than, you know, when the QSCAB's were actually sold, that do you feel like you're going to be able to do all the projects, and that, I don't know what the bid climate is, do you feel like things are going well? And thank you for addressing. The other one was, of course, the main question was the 10% amount, which we know that you have to meet, so I'm glad that you're moving along and meeting that. That's obviously, as you know, very important, so.
I think on the mechanical-electrical side, after talking with the design firm, I feel pretty good about that. I think we're going to be able to do everything. The roofing engineer feels a little nervous, of course, with all the steel involved, and how that fluctuates, so hopefully that will turn out fine, but I am a little nervous about that one.
Will that be one of the reasons for holding off on the one, just in case?
Architecture, yes, because that's the, in rank order of importance, that's the one at the bottom, so, yeah.
Well, good, thank you. I'm glad to know that you ranked them in that order, and that you were, as I would expect you to be, that you're looking at it closely, so thank you very much.
The roof that you're talking about, is that over a, what's the level of importance? Is it in a school? I mean, I know it's in a school, but is it over classrooms? Is it over a gym? Is it over a garage?
It's over classrooms. It's the continuation of the roof that we replaced a portion of a couple of years ago with your help, so it's over multiple classrooms, cafeteria.
And I thought the media center was also involved in that as well?
The center, as well. It's really the entire school. We did the gym area a couple of years ago, and it's the rest of the school.
Are the projects going to be completed during the school year, next summer, or?
We're going to have to get creative with a couple of the projects, the roof, and at the same building, the Kannapolis Intermediate School, we're replacing the entire HVAC system also. So what we hope to do is, over the next two summers, is divide both those projects in half, and do half of them one summer and half of them the next summer. I think that we have until April of 2014 to expend the funds, so I don't think we'll have any problem.
Okay.
Now, some of the control work and parking lot civil work, that can be done while school's going on, so we'll try to go ahead and start working on those.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Crabtree.
Thank you.
Next matter we have is the consent agenda under F. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is the G1 is the new business, Large Animal Harvesting and Processing Facility Management Agreement and Public Hearing. I'll turn that over to Mr. Day at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back in June, you'll recall that a contract was awarded to J.D. Goodrum Company for the construction of a large animal harvesting and processing facility that will be constructed adjacent to the existing Cruz Meats in Reimer. The item before you tonight is a management agreement for the operation of that facility, and it's done pursuant to Statute 158-7.1, which has to do with economic development. There is an agreement attached that you saw at your work session. I believe there was some discussion at the work session about item number seven, that's on page?
200.
That section has to do with a loan of
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is the G1 is the new business, Large Animal Harvesting and Processing Facility Management Agreement and Public Hearing. I'll turn that over to Mr. Day at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back in June, you'll recall that a contract was awarded to J.D. Goodrum Company for the construction of a large animal harvesting and processing facility that will be constructed adjacent to the existing Cruz Meats in Reimer. The item before you tonight is a management agreement for the operation of that facility and it's done pursuant to Statute 158-7.1, which has to do with economic development. There is an agreement attached that you saw at your work session. I believe there was some discussion at the work session about item number seven, that's on page?
Two hundred.
Two hundred. That section has to do with a loan of approximately $350,000. I should point out also that that may actually be up to $385,000. The loan would be, as I understand from the construct, or from the conversation the board had about this, would have an interest rate equal to whatever the investment rate the county receives at the time of the award of a contract for the construction of the wastewater and water system. The terms would be laid out on that later, depending, after the, as this has been approved and there's an opportunity to find out exactly what are the, what the requirements are of the system. Other than that, I'm not aware of any changes to be made. I think that there are approximately 12 jobs that would be associated with this, but Mr. Cruz is here today and can answer any questions that you may have for him. If anybody has any questions of what's been presented to them, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Day?
I've got a couple and I was just wondering about the, and it has to do with the loan and the surcharge. And it kind of hit me over the weekend, is that are we, in essence, I mean, in some ways are we almost double taxation because we're using public money for this loan, but then we're gonna charge, have a surcharge on the per pound processing? So whoever buys that, you know, if it's a Cabarrus County resident, they've already, that's money they've already paid in taxes and we're gonna pay it back by charging no more money. Now, that's the only thing I see on that, is that, and I wonder what I, and the way I worked around it and is that, I don't know what, you know, I know that, an article I saw today and it's, of course, 10 years old, and I don't know if Mr. Cruz may be able to reflect more on it, but as far as right now, slaughter of animals, if it happens to be done in North Wilkesboro, there is a cost associated with that that is already added in, you know, to the price per pound of the meat processed. Is that, you know, would that be equivalent or is that more than what we would be looking at on the surcharge? You know, and that's, you know, it would, see what I'm saying, is that you use the savings from the, not having to process the meat in North Wilkesboro, that we pay that without having to have a surcharge?
Well, part of my understanding of what makes it work is that because of the grant money going into this program, obviously, it's eliminating the capital cost of construction as if it were a typical private business. So the overhead that would be involved normally for this process or for the charge isn't there. So it already is advantageous to those who are using it. So this part of it, this is a bit different, but also bear in mind that this facility will be used by people outside of the county as well. This will be, it will be a regional center and it will be quite a busy one, we anticipate.
And the other question I had was on paragraph 15 and this is just a minor thing, but in looking at the, is that it reserves the right of the county if the facility's unable to turn a profit to increase the price of the product in order for it to turn a profit. Do we, who would do that? Would that be, you know, would it be this board or who would do that? Because it's kind of getting close to, we're, kind of smacks a little bit of central planning. I don't, I know it's not what it's, I don't think that's the intent of it, but, you know, that we're, you know, it's, because it's gonna be privately operated, I mean publicly, property publicly owned, privately operated under a management contract, that should we be involved at all in setting the price of the product? Because the market's gonna handle, you know, what it sells for.
That's a good point. I would ask the county attorney to chime in since he drafted the agreement and may have a better idea, may be able to explain it better.
The idea behind that paragraph was to, to have, for the county to have some control over the pricing in order to make sure that the amount of revenue generated by the operation does cover the basic overhead amounts. Certainly, what would trigger it is if it is in a losing position, namely that it's not generating a profit at all. And in that event, then I wanted to reserve to the county the right to be able to go in and look at it and have the ability to help set a price that presumably would be enough for the facility to at least break even. That was the idea behind that.
Knowing Mr. Cruz, I really don't think it's gonna be a problem.
That's what I'm saying, it's not a major issue, but the, and I have some other comments I'll make wait till I actually get finished to make those.
When you're talking about this is a regional, this will be a regional, I call them an abattoir, but a regional area, what's the region we're talking about? Is it, you know, I know it obviously would be Cabarrus, Rowan and Stanley, but what is the natural region that this would open up more business?
I guess that'll be decided finally by the market and by the interest in it. I would, I would think it would probably be fairly large, but, because it's gonna be one of the closer facilities than those that are available now for many counties. It might even be the case that people from South Carolina would even come up for it because of the availability of this, this type of service and abattoir. There are not that many regional facilities like this one.
But I know when I was in, when I was in Bowie's Creek, we had to go up to Salar City and I think that's where we took a lot of the stuff, up in Salar City. And I didn't know what, how many are in the state and then what this would be pulling from.
And it also has to do with the amount of processing of individual farms. So I know of a farm in the Asheville area, they send cattle to about three or four different facilities in order to process all the volume they need. And in fact, he's interested in this one.
Right.
Excuse me. So it's, I guess the final answer is it depends on a matter of preference, but in most cases where this is the closest facility, it's probably gonna be used by those folks that could be easily a 15, 20 county area.
When it gets processed, will some of that product be sold through Cruz's Meat or will it be going back to whoever brings the animal in or animals in, and then they distribute it? Or will it be a little bit of both?
There are opportunities for both. One of the things that will be available here now is a custom label that can be.
That's what I was gonna ask next.
That can be used by whomever is having the processing done. So we would expect to see this all over, maybe even in just regular grocery stores. For example, right now, or just recently, Lowe's Foods has started selling meat from a farm in Oakboro. And so there's all sorts of opportunities like that that are gonna open up. In our county, the largest commodity is beef, but much of it is sold early, auctioned off as calves and sent to a feeder or to lots out in the Midwest. So the opportunity for actually growing the cattle here, processing it here and having it consumed in our region will exist. And so Cooperative Extension now is planning an effort to begin educating folks on the availability of this throughout the, particularly in the county, but throughout the region as well. So we anticipate that there will be a great deal of demand and it'll be capable of processing about 25 head a day of beef cattle.
And is that, that should satisfy the farmers here in Cabarrus County, but also be able to pull, pull outside of the county?
That's right, exactly.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is it, I mean, whenever you're thinking of the animal harvesting and processing, you know, your first thought is cows? Is it limited to only beef or is it?
It's not, but larger animal, it includes swine, includes sheep, goats, pretty much any, any forlayed critter of that size.
Wouldn't it have to be animals that are raised on a farm? I mean, you couldn't go out and shoot a deer and bring it in?
That would be.
That would be outside.
I don't know if Max does that now at his facility.
Any other questions? I'll open up for public hearing. Anybody would like to speak for or against the proposed management agreement and between Cruz Meats and as well as the county? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would if I could. I gotta, just wrote down a few notes here, it won't take long, but I was, because it had been some questions I've received, you know, like, well, why are we getting into, when the county's getting into meat processing business where, and explaining to them we're not, that what we're doing here is taking something that there is no, you know, we're trying to move into, promote localism and the growth of our local businesses. And in doing so, the only way and the only method we had to do it was to go for these grants, because I think, probably Mr. Cruz probably attested this, and we, that I, in fact, I just got, I'm in the process now reading a book called Local Investing and it's, it's like the third rail of the whole local movement. We've, we've actually addressed the food issue here in the county. We're in the process of addressing local businesses, but this is the third, which is local investing. And that unfortunately, the laws that we have on the books in this country, they've been there since the 30s, do not, are really biased against me being able as a local business person to go out and just maybe send a letter out to neighbors and friends and customers saying, "I want to expand, would you like to invest in my business?" And there was a story told in this book about a dairy in the Hudson Valley of New York that was very successful in producing a kind of a, I guess, better term, a boutique milk that they sold in New York City. And that the guy wanted to expand into yogurt and cheese and other dairy products. So he sent a letter out to his customers asking and telling them that he would sell them a share for $1,000 and they'd get 6% return on it. And he got a nice letter from the federal government telling him that he was breaking the law because it was illegal for him to do that, because he had to go through this SEC and do, meet all the regulations and the banking regulations. And I like this idea because what it does, it gives, it's something where, you know, we can do economic development for the smaller business person. You know, it's not incentives, it's something that I feel like that is an example that if there's any way we can do it, is to continue to grow this, what we've done here, in other ways for we can get local businesses to get involved, local investors to get involved, even if we form, I don't know, it's community co-ops or if we get to our local, work with our, maybe have, have some kind of, sit down with our, our local banks to determine how would we do some kind of micro loan program so that, you know, people that have small businesses or have an idea would be, have access to capital? Because it's what, from reading this book, that is one of the biggest reasons we're in the mess we're in today is because small businesses have been shut out of the capital markets. And that's, you know, that's the mom and, everything from the self proprietorship to mom and pops to own up to those that have 500 employees, can't get capital. And that's, that's what's hurting us more than anything else. So, and I think this is good because, and again, from what we've got here, Mr. Cruz is gonna operate his businesses like he's operated it. We're going to finance the, through this grant, the kill floor and then the kill floor will help to expand Mr. Cruz's business and he'll manage this and then when there's a day coming down the road where all the grant money will be satisfied and we, that's when it'll become his business completely and so with county, we'll be out of it. So I, you know, we've got to do things like this to innovate and think outside the box if we're gonna be, if we're ever gonna recover from this mess we're in right now.
Any other questions?
That's part of the reason we need to get the government out of private business. Also, we need to get the regulations. They get, about two-thirds of EPA ought to be abolished and done away with. And let the private sector invest in private businesses, downsize the government and get the government out of all private businesses and we'd all be better off. We might be able to pay off that national debt that we got up there in Washington DC where when the government, government loans money, or gives money, just like all the money they give to businesses right now, they gotta borrow 40, anywhere from 42 to 47 cents of every dollar that they spend and that just don't make sense to me. It just, just seems wrong to do that.
Any other? Do we have a motion to approve the management agreement and authorize the county manager to execute the management agreement subject to revisions by the county attorney?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is G2, which is the Economic Development Grant Request for Cell Guard LLC and a public hear, call for a public hearing. I'll turn this over to Mr. Cox and Mr. McDaniels.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here this, tonight to give an overview of the Cell Guard project and be glad to answer any questions. I know you do have a public hearing called for later this evening. This is the third expansion of Cell Guard in 18 months, so very exciting news for us and for the community. This project would entail a $26 million investment in year one, growing this additional $74 million investment in year two and an additional $5 million in year three. If you remember when Cell Guard initially located in Cabarrus County, it was a very similar structure with the grants over three years, a three-year phase. So that's what we've looked at in terms of a grant process, rather than having a grant in year one, then coming back in year two and coming back in year three. We were able to work out at the county level as well as the city level, an agreement that addresses that three, that three-phase program. So it's much easier for the company and it doesn't require the county and the city to do as much legwork. So, quick little update on the project. If you, if you look at the project's timeline, initially, the investment that was announced last spring, or, excuse me, last winter, was a 56 million, or $57 million investment with 223 jobs. Earlier this year, they actually announced Phase Two, which was an additional $65 million and 100 new jobs. And this Phase Three is $105 million of additional investment and 250 new jobs. That totals this entire project when it's built out, an estimated $227 million and 573 new jobs, which is clearly needed in this economy. We have the breakdowns of each grant. The one thing I'll point out, in year one, there is $3 million of real property investment and that is not depreciated on our projections. So what you see is a, for the remaining of the investments, a personal property and we appreciate, depreciate that at 10% and that goes by the guidelines established by the county. It's a best guess because we don't know what those true depreciation schedules will be until we actually know the equipment that'll be in place. But I appreciate the opportunity. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. McDaniels? Commissioner Burge?
What kind of incentive did they get from the state for this last investment?
The Phase Three?
Yeah.
There was, they're open for a 1NC fund and a JDig fund. Those two funds are, the 1NC fund requires a local match, so the city and county are, it's a requirement of the program that the city and county have local grants. So the state has put some money behind the project as well.
Do you know the amount?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
That was money, did they get any of that for this?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Meesmer.
How many jobs do they currently have now? You went through the three phases and the jobs that were proposed, but how many jobs do they have now?
I believe they are approaching 100. I'm not exactly certain. They're in the hiring mode right now. They're still not operational yet. So they're in, if you've been through the facility, they've had the ribbon cutting, the building is in place, they're moving into equipment and starting training right now. But they're, they're not up to the 223 yet for that first phase, but they haven't completed their installation, so to speak. So they're not operational at this point.
Any other questions for Mr. McDaniels? It does look like, one, that in the agreement, it says that they must be full, fully compliant with paying their taxes before they receive any grant.
Yes, sir. If they, for some reason, at this point, it would be hard to do with the building in place, but if they left and paid no taxes, they would receive no grant.
And then second is, this is tied to jobs. If they don't create at least 500, 459 jobs, then they, they will, if they create 459 jobs or greater, they don't have to repay any grants that they've received and plus, we don't have to provide it as well. I mean, it's tied to jobs.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. McDaniels? I'll open this up for public hearing. If anybody would like to speak for or against the possibility of an economic development grant given to Cell Guard. If you'd like to come forward? Mrs. Stillwell? You can come forward and, and if you'll introduce yourself and let me know, let us know whether you're speaking for or against and then the reasons why.
I have a question. Bonnie Stillwell. And my question is related to the potential hiring of these individuals. Are they already working with this company someplace else and are they being transferred into Cabarrus County and in fact, not? into Cabarrus County and in fact, not new hires, but actually transfers?
Mr. McDaniels, will you be able to answer that question? Mr. McDaniels, if, Mrs. Stillwell, if he can, he'll have, he may be able to have that question for you.
Thank you. It is a mix of hires locally as well as, they do have a facility in Charlotte. The plant manager will be moved, or has moved to Cabarrus County from Charlotte and will be directing this facility, but they are trying to hire as local as possible. And I do know some of the employees from Philip Morris have been retained and now are working for Cell Guard. When we had the ground, or the ribbon cutting, we spoke to some folks who were local and a couple of them had worked for Philip Morris and were already on board. So we open the, the viewers at home and everyone in the room, if you know of someone or yourself are looking for employment, they do have their job listings on their website. So they're definitely working hard. You can call our office and we'll be glad to get you the right folks at Cell Guard as well.
And I also believe that RCCC is, has reached out and said that they would offer to retrain or help in retraining or help in training in any aspects that Cell Guard may need.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
I wanted to just make a quick comment and I saw this today from the weekly update we get from Ronnie Bryant with the Charlotte Regional Partnership. And Cell Guard wasn't mentioned particularly, but he did go have a good write-up today about a program called Apprentice 2000 that was started by a couple of German companies back in the mid 90s and has been run by CPCC in which they give the opportunity for bringing in people and actually they pay them full-time. They became, but they go to school, you know, part-time and work part-time to actually learn the technical aspects of those jobs. And I'm not sure if Cell Guard participated in that or planning to participate in it, but that's an excellent opportunity for somebody that wants to retrain for another career because a lot of folks are such desperate straits, they need the income. At the same time, they need to be trained and it's kind of hard to go to school and support your family and I don't know whether the Cell Guard is looking at, has looked at any, at that program or not, but that, and I'm not sure, RCCC doesn't have it, but I'm sure that there's probably ways that it can be done or, you know, looked at since they have a big presence in Charlotte as well. But it is supposed to show, I think that, you know, again, we're on the cusp of doing something great here and just like, you know, five years ago, where we didn't realize that connections would do what it did when it came to town. I don't think we realized yet exactly how much of an impact Cell Guard's going to have on this community as well.
Absolutely. Training's a large part of the, of what Cell Guard's going through right now. If you've been to their facility, it is state-of-the-art, clean-room environments and they are in the process of training and partnering with the Employment Security Commission and the Community College to help get the workforce trained appropriately. There aren't a lot of similar locations in the world. So it's not like where you have two distribution centers where the job skill sets can be somewhat similar. This is pretty involved. So they're definitely doing, doing quite well and they've been very pleased with the workforce in the county.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion before the board?
I move we approve this agreement with Cell Guard.
And authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the county?
Said it better.
Of the board? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, if you could also add to that motion, subject to review by the county attorney, only because we're going to have probably a few tweaks to this agreement relating to the phases. We've been working with the tax department to try to sort that out exactly to make sure that, that the assets that are contained in each of the phases are properly accounted for. So there might be a little bit of a change to the agreement just in that sense, but it won't change the overall business terms of it.
Okay. Thank you. If I have not, I've been reminded to close the public hearing. And now do we have a motion to approve an economic development agreement between Cell Guard and Cabarrus County and authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, subject to the approval or the review by the county attorney? And any additional comments made by the attorney, the attorney at this time?
Couldn't have said it.
Commissioner Cruz, we have a motion and we have a second by Commissioner Poole. Any further discussion? Commissioner Meesmer?
I have three issues with this tax incentive that I would like to address. First, this company has already received a tax incentive last year through the process and at that time, the company received a combination cash payment from the city and the county totaling $700,000. So that company has already received one tax incentive. I think it should be at least limited to one if we're going to have that. Also, previously in some of our last meetings discussing the tax incentives, I mentioned that this is intermingling government and business too much. And I think the first tax incentive that was passed for this company, a cash payment to a company from a government, is intermingling government and business. The second point, the second issue I have with this is, the governor came to town for the company's celebration two or three weeks ago and the company had the celebration, I think it was a little presumptuous on the governor's behalf and the company's behalf to have this celebration, knowing that this was dependent upon our vote tonight. So it's kind of putting the cart before the horse on that. Which leads me into my third issue is, in the county's economic development grant program policy, written in the policy, we have, it states that the applicant must demonstrate to the satisfaction of the Board of Commissioners that would not construct these facilities but for the award of the grant. And in my mindset, having a celebration two or three weeks ago announcing this expansion, announcing these jobs, does not show me that they are waiting, that they did this for the, for the grant. Like I said, it was a little presumptuous on their behalf. Also, the grant will only be awarded to bring about the relocation or expansion of business that would not have occurred except for the award of the grant or to encourage the development or help ensure the success of certain targeted businesses and/or geographic areas. Like I said, this company has already announced this expansion. They announced it two or three weeks ago and then to have a vote on a tax incentive after the fact, I certainly don't think that this should come before the board.
Any other comments? Commissioner Burge?
Well, I'm, you know, like I said a while ago, I think government should get out of private business. If a, if a company is going to be a money-making operation, private sector investors will get involved in it, they'll put the money in it, they'll keep it running, keep it going. Government don't have to be involved in it whatsoever. As far as I'm concerned, it's unfair taxation and to me, it's morally and ethically wrong to do what's been done. And I can't vote for it, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion before this board to approve the grant to Cell Guard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-2. Next is the Rural Operation Assistance Program Funding and a call for a public hearing on page 239. Mr. Bushy, thank you.
We are here tonight for a public hearing for a 2011, 2012 rope grant from the state of North Carolina, which provides transportation assistance for elderly and handicapped, employment and rural general public transportation. And this year, we are receiving from the state of North Carolina, the amount of $196,607.
Any questions for Mr. Bushy? I'll open this matter up for public hearing. Anybody would like to speak for or against a, the adoption of the FY 2012 Rural Operating Assistance Program or ROPE certified statement? Saying that, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion by this board?
A move that is be approved?
We have a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2012 Rural Operating Assistance Program certified statement. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions or any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is G4, which is the old jail demolition reconstruction project. Mr. Downs.
As we discussed at the work session, this is the selection of the architecture, architecture firm for the design services, design and engineering services for the demolition of the old jail. The project would actually include demolition of the 1986 section of the, of the old jail, remodeling and renovation of the 1970 portion of the old jail. And then, and then also the creation and configuration of a, of a new parking surface, surface parking lot in that general area where the building will be removed from. And the RFQs were sent out and the selection was, is being recommended by staff for Griffin Architecture.
Any questions for Mr. Downs?
I just had a couple. Because I've had a couple of questions posed to me about, you know, the typical questions. You know, we've just, you know, moved a board reflection, process of moving it up the street, Church Street, and then we're going to tear this building down of, why can't we convert, you know, the jail into office space? And, you know, I know that it's probably obvious to a lot of people, but I mean, what was the cost? What would we have to do in there if we went, decided to go in and try to convert that office space other than we truly then would have a, people would fill up here in a cell when they're in their cubicle?
Yes, I, I'll probably let Mr. Billiver answer that, but there would be the, the removal of all the cells, which is all concrete and steel, which is very expensive. All of the utilities, the infrastructure in there have been misused, abused by the inmates over the last several years of clogging drains. All of the drains are damaged, ceiling tiles, the ceilings have been leaking and the offices below have been leaking as well. So you would, the entire building would have to be gutted and it's going to be a very expensive process to, to gut all of that steel. Some of that is going to occur in the 1970s section, but that is just going to be an open storage space. But I'll, I'll let Mr. Billiver, he can probably elaborate a little bit more on the technical aspects of that, so.
Also, Mr. Billiver, would you explain this part of the building that will remain and where those offices are and kind of describe so people understand the part that will be, that will remain and how that will be used?
Sure.
Thanks.
The, the part of the offices that will remain is what's known as the old sheriff's department now. It's currently office space, it's not any cells or anything like that. There'll be minimal amount of work that's done to reconfigure that to create actual office space. The area that you're speaking about is why are we not going into the 1986 part? None of that is office space at all. There might be two offices in it, it's kitchen and complete cells and what Mr. Downs said is exactly correct. To gut it, it's, it's more than just the term gutting it, literally how all that metal and that infrastructure and the plumbing chases in there, about the time that you took everything out, you would have affected the structural integrity of the, of that building so much that you would have problems. You'd also need a new complete roof and new complete drainage system to that roof also.
Okay. And that was one of the challenges too. I know that this building was originally designed, I believe, to hold additional floors on top of it. And one of the big things we ran into was the codes had changed so much that it would, it was obsolete when it came time to add those other floors, so.
Correct.
Okay.
And you talked about it at our work session about trying to resell items out of it to other jails.
It's actually not other jails, it's, it's companies that work on those, those control systems and door systems. I don't want to say that it's other jails. There's, from what they tell me, there's probably 10 or 15 other county jails in the area, well, not in the area, in the actual whole state that use our.
Right. Refurbishing them and then reselling them.
That is correct. You can no longer purchase parts and you haven't been able to for a good three to four years now.
So whatever can be taken out and sold to recoup costs is, that's going to be done?
Everything up to the last minute when we start the demolition. Some of the things, some of those outside doors that have locking mechanisms, those will not go literally until I, we're ready to demolish it.
Okay.
And you're going to recycle as much as possible? Also, you mentioned that at the work session?
Yeah. I mean, when we did the old fairgrounds, we had an 87.3% recycling and that was nowhere near the amount of metal and brick. When, when we say recycle, that means that that construction material is taken somewhere else and can be made into another construction material. So I don't want people thinking that means brick by brick, it's going to come down, somebody's going to go build a house with that brick. That, that's going to be recycled as different materials.
Any other questions?
And the architecture firm that you're recommending is a local firm?
It is.
So that we are using local businesses to do the, the work as, as far as the architect goes and looks like the Civil and the other firms that the architect will hire are in this region, in neighboring counties.
That is correct. It's Griffin Architecture and that is correct.
Any other questions?
I know there was a concern raised in our agenda meeting from the chairman about the overflow of inmates if the state requires us to house inmates longer. And I've had to, I've read in the newspaper about Cabarrus County, the idea of Cabarrus County taking over the Mount Pleasant Prison. And has there been any comparison of the Mount Pleasant Prison and the old jail? I know Mr. Billiver said that at our last meeting that it would cost a fortune to outfit the old jail to bring it up to standard, but the Mount Pleasant Prison, has there been any comparison, anything?
And I think Mr. Billiver can probably give you some ballpark information about that. He's been working on it and we plan on doing a report to the board at its next meeting on, on this process. But Kyle, I want you to go ahead and kind of give a rough description of your, of your opinion of the state of that, that prison.
Of the? Mount Pleasant?
Mount Pleasant.
Okay. The Mount Pleasant Prison in terms of structural integrity of the buildings is adequate. They were built, obviously, in a day where, when you built things, they were, they stood. There are several ADA concerns out there and basically what the intention of, of the group that is going to determine the costs out there is that some of the discussion that we've had with the state is that if this, if that prison was given to us, there would be certain requirements they would want for ADA and the other requirements, they would not make us move forward for ADA. And that's, that would be the bulk of the cost out there.
Some of the things. Commissioner Meesmer, that, that, I want to say, it was recently and I don't know, I can't tell the time, but when it was becoming clearer that the state was going to abandon the Mount Pleasant facility, it was presented to me, is this something that the county wanted to do? And I did not think at that point in time, we had enough information for the board to start fully discussing it and getting a good understanding about what does that mean? So that over the past several weeks or months, I have met twice with Mount Pleasant or with the sheriff saying, let's hunt, what do we got? What are some of the issues that we got to deal with? And then we were planning on, or the plan was to have a different discussion session, not a work session, that we can spend a couple of hours to sit down and talk about it. Mr. Billiver, Sheriff Riley, some of the people in the jail to say, this is what we need and this is what Mount Pleasant may be able to provide instead of spending six hours talking about a lot of things that we're just not really honing in on. So that what I've tried to do over the past two months is hone down some of that information so that we can be more productive in our meeting. And I was at the work session, or tonight I was going to tell everybody about it, but at the work session to say, the information can be obtained sometime in the next two weeks to be able to finalize that information and us discuss it, discuss it productively, I would suggest we have a separate meeting than a work session or a regular session in the third or the fourth week of September. One thing that's kind of delayed that is, Mr. Billiver has been asking and is close to getting information from the state in regards to day-to-day costs so that that information can be factored in. And then Mrs. Dubois, Mr. Billiver and Sheriff Riley can provide us with that information so that the, there has been no, it's not a purchase, we're not buying it for any set amount. The understanding is that we have received that property and it would be an opportunity for Sheriff Riley to, to operate it much less than the remodeling over here as well as the construction of a new facility down the road. And it's roughly about 200 beds.
Right. I saw, yeah, I'd read it in the paper on two occasions and hadn't received any information on it, so.
And it's, it's a matter of winnowing down a great expanse of information down to something that is, that can be more productive at discussions. And that doesn't mean that more questions will not be posed by this board that weren't contemplated, but kind of weeding through, what is the ADA issues? Are there waivers that can be obtained out there? Are they realistic in getting that information? The communications between a jailer and. Um, the communications between, uh, a jailer and, um, another jailer, what sort of communications are we talking about? Are there waivers that can be done? Do we need to have waivers? Fencing, you know, things like that as to basically, what is the grand ideas and how can we, how can that information be concise but informational for our point of view? Then we can lead some productive discussions as to whether or not we wanna do it or not.
I, okay. I guess my, um, I guess the general question is, it will be, I just wanna make sure the Mount Pleasant Prison is not gonna cost more to outfit than this. Uh, before we move forward with this, I would want to make sure that the Mount Pleasant Prison is more functionable or would require less outfit than this building. I would hate to move forward and demolish this building and then realize the Mount Pleasant Prison would be far too expensive to outfit and it says, well, we just demolished the old jail, which would have cost less if we're put in this position. Uh, I guess that's my general question and.
The, the jail across the street is an old-time cell block type structure and the one in Mount Pleasant is really a dorm. Uh, so the, the costs of renovation are very, very different and a, as, uh, Mr. Billiford was saying, it's, it's in pretty good shape. It's been maintained pretty well.
Well, I could see.
One other thing, I'm sorry Commissioner Cruz, one other thing is in regards to the Mount Pleasant facility is not only is it the structural facility, but it's a total of 55 or 60 acres.
Just shy of 60.
Okay. So roughly 60 acres, so that it's not only the facility, but also the 60 acres that encompasses the facility that would allow for expansion or what have you there as opposed to downtown. So that in future, so that in future years, the idea is, um, I believe to address your question is the cost is, will be the same if not less. Um, but we get the, we get an additional, a tremendous amount of land that we normally would not, that is not factored in. So if you wanna look at land and structure, it's less, okay? But if you just wanna look at outfit versus, you know, outfit versus purchase or outfit versus outfit, it will probably be about the same, is, is my gut feeling.
One of the things, um, with Chairman that, and it's not throw another thing in the middle of all this, but, and it's been talked about and brought up by a couple of folks that have been involved with our task force on, you know, animal adoption program. And in a lot of communities, um, inmates are involved in, in fostering and taking care and retraining and rehabilitating, uh, dogs. And, uh, the thought was, and somebody brought that point up to me, is that if this was, we were to go out there, it would be a good place to actually have an expanded, you know, animal shelter out there to, and where the inmates would be involved in, in some of the program and doing that.
So that, that's already happening out there.
Yeah, that, because they're already doing it from the state.
Yeah, I mean, I've been there several times.
Yeah, so it's there now. And, uh, but it's not, it's not our, part of our county program. I think it's a, a thing the state program, State Department of Corrections runs, but it's, it's already geared up that you could, you could easily do that. And I've had some folks that have made comments to me about that.
Sheriff Riley has made a couple of comments that, uh, that he sees it as the opportunity to do a lot of different services, um, out there. And he even sees that if there are businesses that would want to hire somebody to come into their business and to perform some service, you know, for a fee, for a payment, um, that there is, there is a lot of opportunities they can have out there that he envisions that pro, that facility that doesn't cost the county any additional amount of money.
Mm-hmm.
So. Any other questions? Commissioner Burge?
Why, why did the state close it? Was it budget issues or?
It, it was. The state, uh, is closing four prisons across the state for budget reasons.
I mean, they can't afford to operate it or they just don't wanna operate it?
That's an interesting question. I'm not entirely sure because if the county operates, it would be, uh, receiving a fee, uh, for each prisoner that's in it. So I, I'm, I'm not sure I understand that exactly, wha- what they hope to do.
In other words, the county is gonna take prisoners from outside of Cabarrus County down there?
The county would have that opportunity to do that as well, plus those, um, that would be sentenced to, um, up to six months, um, for, for felonies in this county as well. Uh, but this, the one, the one bottom line for this is that, uh, the state has to agree to a fee that will hold the county harmless essentially or make the county whole for any expenses that it incurs.
Would it be cheaper to keep them down there than keep them across the street?
Well, that facility doesn't work so well for the kinds of folks that are across the street, uh, the, which are the pre-trial detainees and these are, will be prisoners. They will be convicted, uh, prisoners.
Okay. You're just talking about people that's already been court sentenced and.
Correct.
Serving out their time down there instead of across the street.
Correct. And those are the people that we're concerned about in this facility overcrowding it, um, and that's why this becomes an option and, and may be a favorable one provided that the state, uh, is willing to, uh, pay a fee that's sufficient to cover the cost.
And, and that was also one of the big fears of some of the folks that were opposed to the jail being built across the street was the fact that we would take in folks that would not meet the criteria of a county inmate.
They're gonna give the facility to the county?
That is what I would encourage this board to only take it over if they give it to us for a dollar.
Okay.
That, um, items that are there right now stay there. In other words, um, if there is equipment that's in there, it stays there. There's different things that I wanna, that when we have this work session that I will recommend that I think that if the county's gonna take over the Mount Pleasant facility, these are the conditions that I think that we should consider and we should put in there. But you're correct is, I, you know, I'm, I don't think that the county's gonna say, we're gonna buy it for tax value or, you know, I think it ought to be, if we're gonna take it over, then this is the conditions that we take it over under. These are the conditions that we take it over.
In other words, they walk out and leave everything?
Correct. But I wanna make certain, what does that mean? And that's what Mr. Billiford has looked into as well as some other people have looked into is.
Except their hazardous material that got tore down there.
Well, I think that Mr. Billiford has looked in, looked at a lot of different things in there, but, uh, I think that that's the whole thing is gathering, gathering this information to then, for us to have a productive conversation as if that's what we wanna do. But to, I didn't think it would be productive for us to meet three or four different times to start whittling it down as a group of five as to, these are some concerns.
May I suggest, Mr. Chairman, too, if when we have that, that session, that we actually, uh, advertise and actually have it at the facility at Mount Pleasant, that way we can see it.
I don't know if we can do that since they have prisoners there.
Okay, or near there, or whatever. Yeah, okay. I'm not gonna say that we go into the dorm and, you know, pull the bunks up. Maybe if we had a meeting room or something there that we could be on site to, or at least get a tour of the facility as part of it, yeah.
I, I think, I'll talk to Mr. Billiford about either getting some good photographs or something and we get an idea, but I don't know how much, if I was in the Department of Corrections, I would not want somebody outside come in and taking pictures that then can be disseminated out to the public.
They frown upon that, actually.
Yeah.
We'll have a very, very concise report for you and if, if somebody wants to get a tour, I'm, I'm sure that I can speak with them and arrange something. As far as meeting out there, there's not really any meeting space out there.
There's got a big lawn out there that, but I don't, I wouldn't suggest that. Any other questions?
Do we have a motion to approve the selection of Griffin Architecture for the Architectural Design Services for the Old Jail demolition recon- reconstruction project and authorize the county manager and county attorney to negotiate and sign the associated contract subject to review and/or revision by the county attorney?
So move it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Next we have is G5 is the presentation of the Schedule of Values for the 2012 Revaluation. Um, I can call on Mr. Weisner if you'll please come forward, but we also have a flash drive that's been provided to us at the beginning of our meeting.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm here to present to you the Schedule of Values for the 2012 Revaluation Project. This schedule is a very important document, obviously. It, um, it sets up the base rates and the adjustments that we use to arrive at assessed values for, for the properties within the county. Now that being said, that doesn't, uh, your adoption of the schedule doesn't automatically assign everybody with a tax value. We still have to go out and look at the properties, investigate each property and arrive, and adjust these schedules so that they arrive at a fair market value for each property within the county. And we will continue to work on that through the end of the year with the hopes of sending out the assessed values to the taxpayers February, early February 2012. This adoption process is a, is necessarily a long process. It, it takes three months to complete. The first step is tonight, presenting it to you and making it available to the public to look at. The, at the September meeting, we're, we would request tonight that you set a public hearing to hear from taxpayers who may be concerned about the schedules. As of tomorrow, the schedules will be available on our website for the taxpayers to look at. Also, they will be available in our office. If folks have questions about the schedules, they can come in and sit down and speak with us or give us a call and we'll go through the schedules with them. It's a 277-page document, so it's pretty hard for us to cover it here tonight. Uh, it's gonna take people time to look at it and to read it. The, uh, once the public hearing is held, we'll come back in October and ask for you to adopt the schedules. If you adopt the schedules at that time, we will run ad- advertisements in the paper for the next, uh, four consecutive weeks to let the public know that the schedules have been adopted. And then on November the 18th, that, which is 30 days after adoption, the schedules will become final unless there's a, an appeal to the schedules. Those appeals would be processed through the Board of Equalization Review and from there to the Property Tax Commission in Raleigh if, if satisfactory settlement is not found. The schedule. Can I put this up on the screen? If I know how to work this thing? I think I got it. I'm gonna pop to two pa- page 281. The schedule's made up of 13 chapters, says 12 here, but one of them has an A chapter. And five of the chapters are, are very important for you to look at, so I would draw your attention to, uh, Chapter 4, which is the land appraisal chapter. In that chapter, we have all the adjustments that we make to land, whether, uh, to, to allow for it to be on, uh, so whether it's on paved roads or no access, whether it has water and sewer, whether it has no utilities. We have adjustments for size on acreage. We, we have just a whole myriad of different types of adjustments for land. We typically, in pricing our land, we, we price by neighborhood, we come up with a base price within the neighborhood and then we make adjustments depending on the different factors between the properties. Those are all contained in Chapter 4. Chapter 4A is the present use chapter. Uh, most people call that the farm use chapter. So that's gonna have the values that we're, we assign to properties that qualify for the farm use program. These values are suggested to us by the North Car- Carolina Use Value Advisory Board. And if we'll jump to page 360. Page 360 contains some of the information that the Use Value Advisory Board gave to us. They, they send us a book that's about 80 pages long with information. The values are arrived at through capitalizing the rent, rental income or the potential rental income for different types of property. On this page, you can see that the agricultural rents for the Piedmont area are established in a range of $24.90 an acre to $56.20 an acre. And if you capitalize that using the, uh, state required capitalization rate of 6.5%, you come up with a high value of, um, $865 an acre and a low value of $385 an acre. And I will point out to you that these, these values have increased since the last revaluation due to the fact that the average rental rates have increased. Capitalization rate is still the same. On agricultural land that is considered suitable for growing row crops, the increase is about 20%. For open land that's considered unsuitable for row crops, the increase is about 12%. Forestry, which is further down the page, has increased about 45%. And agriculture has, land has remained constant, only about a 1% increase there. Chapter 8, which is on page 424, or the page I want you to look at. Chapter 8 is the income approached value and it'll be very important to us this time as we do not have a lot of sales in commercial industrial land. So we'll be looking at a capitalized value based on potential, uh, income and, uh, capitaliz- capitalization rates. This page shows the standard capitalization rates that we plan to use. And they are, the capitalization rates have increased since the last revaluation, which means the capitalized value will decrease from the last revaluation. So we can expect some decline in, uh, income-producing land based on that. Chapter 11, if we'll skip to page 459. Chapter 11 is our, what we call a county specifications chapter. It has all the base rates that we use on buildings, all the depreciation tables we use, all of the outbuildings schemes that we use to price outbuildings and extra features. So anything to do with structures will be found in Chapter 11. This particular page that I've brought up is our base rate page, doesn't show up too well on that screen up there, but, for instance, the single fam- the first one on the page is a single-family residential. The square footage rate is $70 a square foot. The last revaluation, we used $71 a square foot, so it's dropped slightly. Plus all those properties have depreciated another four years since the last revaluation. So right there, you'll see a decline in residential property values. The amount of that decline will vary from neighborhood to neighborhood as we go through the appraisal process. And Chapter 12, if you jump to page 506. Chapter 12 is simply the definition chapter in the manual, so if you have questions about what the individual codes are, the descriptions, or what the, um, definition of the descriptions are, you can go to Chapter 12 and read those descriptions. And that's all I had planned to show you tonight since it's a very complex document. And I'll be glad and available to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Weisner, I got, I have one, I don't mean for it to sound kind of flippant when I ask it, but is there, where does the page add in here that tells where the commissioners tell you what we want the values to be set at?
Um, that page hasn't been added yet, but we can add that one later. But, uh, this, this, this book is simply, the Board of Commissioners since, simply approve us to use this book. It's our obligation then to take that book and apply it to each property and come up with a fair market value.
And that's what I, I guess I wanted to follow that up with, that this is the thing that makes it apples-to-apples comparison so that we're, we have the fairness. This is the standard that's used.
Right. To give you an example of how the Schedule of Values works, you know, a fee appraiser will go out and appraise your house. And he'll look, he'll look for comps and the comps will all have differences and he'll make adjustments from the comps to your property on the differences. The differences are the Schedule of Values. The Schedule of Values sets up, sets up how much we'd charge for a fireplace if, if, if the property did or did not have a fireplace. How much extra square footage is worth, how much a garage is worth, those type of things. We still have to apply that and we still have to look at sales within a neighborhood and we have to come to market value.
And I just wanna point out, I guess, Mr. Chairman, that this is gonna be, you know, the public out there, you know, this is the, this is the, I guess, the foundational piece for the revale. And it's so important that people look at this over the next month and with our public hearing next month because this will be the basis for everything. And, uh, I would ask to, challenge the public to look at it and if you've got questions or comments or have concerns, be specific about the page number of where you're looking at and what you will need, you know, bring up to us that you would like for us to look at and we go, because we'll have that public hearing next month and, and then I know that it's gonna be two more months before we adopt this, so.
Right.
Plenty of chances for the public to look at this and, and, uh, see how this is gonna be conducted.
And again, we are available to speak with any member of the public. If he has questions about this, they can call us, they can come by the office, we'll sit down and go over it with them.
There any questions for Mr. Weisner? Thank you. Do we have a motion to schedule a public hearing for the September 19th regular meeting?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next matter that we have is appointments to boards. Let's see here, the Council for a Sustainable Local Economy, we have a motion to appoint James Fulton to the council for a two-year term ending March 31st, 2013, and to appoint Sam Leader and Wayne King for a one-year term ending March 31st, 2012.
Second.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. In regards to the adult. In regards to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, we have a motion to review, remove A.L. Fleming from the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee roster.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next we have is reports, and I'll turn this over, the EDC presentation of the quarterly report. Mr. McDaniels.
Thank you. Pleased to give the quarterly, and I guess this will serve as a annual report for the past, past year. And I'll walk you through, I think you have the presentation on your, on your computers. But our first two pages are a sort of a performance dashboard, and we've set this up to sort of say a two-pager, just so you can see where we are. I think we're going to start presenting this to our board as well, and so that sometimes they get annoyed when we go on and on with some of the numbers, so this will be an easier opportunity for them. But the best number and the most important number is at the top left. You can see our projects, we're at 48 active projects at the end of June, as opposed to 23 in 2010 and 12 in 2009. So that's what we're here to do, and see that project activity is very, very promising for us as a, as an EDC, as well as the community. That mix, you can see, manufacturing represents 65% of our active project mix. We hear about the decline in manufacturing in America, but these numbers would prove elsewise, and that the real change has been to advanced manufacturing, that high capital investment, unfortunately, sometimes lower employment base, but we still are making things in the United States and still doing a good job. You can see our broker mix as well, or see our project source mix, see where the majority of our leads are coming from. We like that to be diverse. We don't want it to be overwhelmed by one source. The better relationships that we have with our partners is, will provide more opportunities for us in the future. You can see our sites and building database. At the time of this day, sort of dashboard, we had 120 buildings listed and 107 sites listed. So that's a good, healthy mix. It's a lot to keep up with for a, for a short staff, but we also, it gives us a lot of opportunity when people are looking at the area for us to be competitive. We also have included our most submitted buildings. And what that means is they met the criteria that someone was looking at for relocation process. So trends you'll see in those buildings are modern construction, good ceiling height, proper utilities, proper zoning. We, we don't choose which buildings are submitted. We don't have favorite buildings or sites. We simply go to the criteria and hope that we have, you know, we'd rather have five buildings or sites to submit as opposed to two or three. You can see some of the fast facts that were downloaded. That's sort of a quick, one, well, it's actually two-page flyer, which if someone needs just some quick information on the community, we put that on the website, and that's been downloaded about 1,500 times. So that's a good opportunity for folks, if they need something, to throw in a packet or a presentation to give a quick update on what's going on with the community. The next pages, next couple pages are more macro information on the state's economy. I believe we include those each quarter. You can see some of the trends that are, that are going with labor force and other issues. On the pages after that, we do have two updates on our certified site program. We've, since we met with you last, we've certified two more sites. I think we officially got the certificate, which you'll see a copy of. One site is International Crossing, that's at the corner of Poplar Tent International Drive. That's a 18-acre site that has been vacant for some, for some time. We met with the developer and he said, you know, let's include it in the certified site program. So we went through quite a process, and they modified their program, and it's a little more, as all things are when they change, it involves a little bit of a learning curve on our end and their end. But I think we've, we've mastered it now and are excited about including that. We've also certified lots 7, 8, and 9 in International Business Park. That's on your next page. What you're seeing is their certificate. We'll submit that certificate when we send out information on projects, so they have a certain comfort level that these properties are suitable for development. So that brings us to five certified sites. Four of those are in Concord, one is in Kannapolis. We are constantly trying to add certified sites to our system. So if there's any landowners in the audience or watching on TV who want to include their properties, let us know. We'll be glad to walk you through that process of what it entails. The next couple pages are our staff activities. I won't bore you with the details of that. Leading into the next, this is a new page we have, total employment and establishments by county. What we wanted to show here, this is some information from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and it breaks, it breaks down total employment for the region as well as the number of establishments. And some of the numbers I pulled out here that I thought were interesting. Your average establishment, which is a business, in Cabarrus County employs about 14.23 people. In Mecklenburg, that goes up to 16.5. They obviously have, you know, larger employers. But when you go to our neighbors in the South Union, that number shrinks to 11.2. So well, actually, if you turn on the next page, you'll see it's building on some of those stats. Work, it's, and I really do not like these headers. Where workers live who are employed in the CRP region as opposed to where persons work who live in the CRP region. It's very, very confusing, but on your left-hand page is really a workforce synopsis. Who, who is available for work in those areas? It does not include part-time jobs and people who are working, maybe part-time or interns or not permanent employment. The other page is where they work. So it's where the jobs. So you'll see that we're actually, we're about 5% of the workforce, 5.7%, but where our jobs are, are 4.5%. You'll see we flip-flop with union there. So even there, their workforce is larger. We actually have more jobs in Cabarrus County than union. We're still behind York and Gaston. Mecklenburg's a separate animal, all to its own, but we continue, we're looking to grow those numbers. We are smaller in population than Gaston and York, but we're looking to grow these jobs numbers so we can catch up with those guys, even though they have a larger workforce than us. Next couple pages, new businesses. These are new businesses that have incorporated in the county, as well as unfortunately companies who've dissolved or withdrawn. Our prospect report, you'll see we have 48. This is a snapshot from June, so this is somewhat dated at this point. If you asked me what company or what Project 26 says, I couldn't tell you, because it may have been withdrawn or it may have visited recently. But the important thing is to get an understanding that there are a lot of big projects out there, and they're continuing to look around the region. The next couple pages, we're leaving them in just for the support. I think they'll go away with that first page. It's all the same information, but I think the first page with the dashboard does a little better job of explaining where we are. And finally, our missions and convention reports. We, June was a busy month, just the way the schedule worked, but we did go to International, the ICSC Show, which is for a big, large retail show. Met with some local retailers who are based here in Cabarrus County who were there, as well as some large ownership groups who own large malls and properties in the county, just to make sure we appreciate their business and letting them know how important they are. Well, we think we have expansion coming out of that visit. Went with the Regional Partnership to Chicago. That was a call, a joint mission in terms of companies and consultants, as well as attorneys and other folks, accounting firms who run projects. So anytime we've got an opportunity to travel with the partnership, I think we called on, it was about 17 or 18 different people in two days. So very busy, a lot of time hustling from cab to cab in Chicago, but we, we definitely reached out and talked to a lot of folks. The IFT and the food show, excuse me, IFT and the bio show, those were both partnerships with the research campus. At the IFT Show, NRC had a booth, and we helped man and staff that booth, as well as representatives from some of the businesses that are on the research campus, as well as universities. NC State had university researchers there, as well as A&amp;T, and I believe Chapel Hill as well. And then finally, the Paris Air Show. That was an opportunity for us to travel with the Department of Commerce. They had a large pavilion, really an eye-opener for us in terms of the aerospace sector. That show, I think there were 700 and, close to 800 planes sold at that show, representing billions of dollars of wealth, as well as smaller businesses who supply the aerospace industry. And that's a good sector for us in the region with what's going on with Boeing and Charleston, the Spirit Aerosystems at the Transpark, and they've just actually picked up a contract with Gulfstream, so they're growing, as well as Honda Jet. Honda Jet's located in Greensboro. So we're in a good position for those Tier 2 and 3 suppliers that can service those large entities and still be located in Cabarrus. So that's been a good sector for us, and I think we're going to grow it. Continuing to partner with the folks at the airport. We have a great relationship with Concord Regional, and we want to create sort of a aerospace-type hub around the airport to create some more jobs locally. So that concludes my part of the presentation. Anna Lou's going to give me an update on the Cabarrus Roots Program.
Can I ask you some questions about this?
Absolutely.
Or does any other, anybody have questions for Mr. McDaniels? You had 48 active projects. Do you have any idea what the ages of those projects are? I know the last time you talked to us, you said that some of them are six months old or years old. Do you keep track of the age?
We do. We have a, it's, it's an entry date when it goes into our system, and then most of the time, we, we set up separate folders so we can track, and they come and go. For example, Great Wolf Lodge, which is here, located in the county now, I think they initially looked in this area around 2000. So they came, disappeared, and then came back. So, but we do monitor that, and that's actually, it's something we have in our system. We'll, we'll pick up those first, probably the last 18 months a little better, because it's a new feature that we've added, so we've been tracking it for the past 18 months. But we could easily add that to the, to the matrix.
Second, as you said, you were talking about a certified site. Is there such an animal as called a certified building to, that would maybe pique someone else's interest? Or is the site the idea of, you can come in and start building on this site right now, and you don't need that for a certified building, because it's already built?
Yeah, that's the design behind the program, is that with a building, you can do a shell building, you can do some virtual shell buildings. Some communities have done a three-sided building with a dirt floor. So you can, you know, basically punch out and add on to the building and put in a floor. But I don't know of any sites or building certification programs that exist. There are engineering firms who'll do studies for you as well, but the majority of the time, folks feel a little more comfortable with a building as opposed to a site. There's much more issues that can arise with a site.
I noticed that in this report, we didn't have anything about the leakage, and I really liked that, that information. In the last report that we had, it gave me a lot of information to understand more about the leakage aspect of, of what we have or don't have, and I was wondering if we can get that put back in.
Absolutely.
In your missions and conventions, I didn't notice that anything on a project by source referenced a mission or a convention that you went to. Is that because we haven't had any, or are we going to the right missions? Are we going to the right conventions? Do they change? Should they change?
Oftentimes, if it's, say we're with Commerce and we're on a mission, we'll categorize that, categorize that, ah, categorize that, ah.
Category.
Put in the category of NC Commerce. So we don't, we could put a separate item. I think we've done that previously where we identified it. If we're with the partnership or a direct call, if we go on a show where we're not partnering with Commerce or the CRP, we'll consider that a direct call. So we could definitely delve into that. And sometimes it's tough, because you'll, you'll make the contact, and then the follow-up will occur six months later, and you'll have no idea it came from a mission or a convention.
Good. Is there any other questions from Mr. McDaniels? Thank you, Mr. McDaniels.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wilson.
Good evening. I'm Anna Lou Wilson, Vice President of Business Services, and tonight I'm going to be talking to you about local contacts and visits that we made April 1st through June 30th of 2011. We visited a variety of businesses in Cabarrus through that quarter. As summer approached, it began to get a little bit tougher to catch people in their offices. But for the most part, businesses were very positive about the economy and also about their business and how well they, they felt they were doing. We asked them about plans for expansion and hiring, and they also felt very positive about that, and that it would be something they would be doing within the next 12 months, they felt like. There were, aside from the economy, there were no major trends or, or any major issues that we could pull out to, to discuss with you during, during that quarter. And overall, I feel like the businesses in our area are doing, they're keeping pace with businesses across the state, if not doing better, or they're doing better than businesses across the state or the nation. If you have any questions for me, that's my report.
Any questions? When looking at the list that you have here, it looks like you've got a good cross-section of small, medium, and large businesses.
Right.
Not focused on one size or, or another, so.
Right. And we try to, to also get the cross-section throughout the municipalities.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to John Cox.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. It's a privilege to be with you tonight. I'm kind of cleanup batter, so with respect to the leakage study, it's a great question, but leakage studies, with respect to agglomerating that information, doesn't happen on a quarterly basis. And sometimes you need, sometimes a year, especially in an economy like this, to see what that is. So we'll take a look at it on the six months of when we, of when the last one was dated, and see if that'll help. I think Ms. Honeycutt has copies of a magazine, maybe she's already passed it out, so it's the International Economic Development Council's Spring Magazine. And a special note for us is on page 39, there's an article entitled "A New City for a New Century." It's written by someone that you know, who would be happy to autograph your copy following this session. But the primary reason that the article is in here is because the IEDC's annual convention is going to be in Charlotte in just a few weeks. Ryan told me today that there are about 1,300 people from around the world who are registered for the conference, and they're coming to Charlotte. And so several months ago, they requested manuscripts from various economic development groups around the state. And Tom Flynn, formerly with the City of Charlotte, asked that I would write something about the North Carolina Research Campus. So while my name is attached to it, there are a lot of fingerprints on it, a lot of different folks who have put ink on the paper. One of the great things about the conference is that while it's in Charlotte, like every other conference we attend with the IEDC, when you're in a particular region of the country, you get to drive out into the country and see especially what's going on. So there are bus trips that are going to the North Carolina Research Campus. In fact, that add-on is actually sold out. Ryan and I are both on individual buses that will, I guess, lead those folks out of Charlotte out here, so we'll get to talk to them, especially when we hit the county line about exit 49, we're probably speaking about 400 words a minute to try to get everything in about Cabarrus County. And then Anna Lou is one of the folks who'll actually be conducting the tour at the research campus. There are also tours with respect to the motorsports industry, so they'll be coming to Cabarrus County again, going to the Speedway and learning about our motorsports infrastructure. Additionally, I'll be serving as a grader. The Certified Economic Development Examination takes place at all of their conferences. And for reaccreditation purposes, we have to earn points, so grading other people's exams gets us points. So Saturday and Sunday, all day of that conference, I'll be down in Charlotte grading exams, and then those tours begin on Monday. So in addition to attending the conference, we will be participating in that fashion. And because the conference came to Charlotte, as many of these large conferences, as you know from being involved in the Tourism Authority, regions put up large amounts of money, and our EDO was asked, as were all the economic development organizations in the region, to make a contribution. Our contribution was $5,000. And for that, both Ryan and I received a scholarship or waiver of a fee, and the annual fee to attend this conference is around $900. So we not only get to go to the conference, but we get great exposure, we think, for the motorsports industry and for the North Carolina Research Campus, and for, I know everybody across the country's reading the article, so I think we get double benefit there. And then I think there are some attachments, and we apologize, Ms. Honeycutt, we frequently frustrate her by sending stuff in. Things keep coming in as we get closer to the date to present to you, so Ronnie Bryant, on one of his recent Monday morning memos, was writing about a number of things related to Charlotte, but the story, paragraph in here about Kannapolis, the research campus, Rowan Cabarrus Community College, and I could go on and on. One of the things I thought you would find most interesting is, if you look at the attached... the things I thought you would find most interesting is, if you look at the attachment, a couple pages in, there's something that's called a film update. So you know our membership and involvement with the Charlotte Regional Partnership involves us with their Charlotte Regional Film Commission, and you wonder, well, why are we involved in film? Well, it does bring revenue to the state of North Carolina. And one of the things that the state legislature did a couple of years ago was they improved the incentives on a state-level basis that North Carolina gives to film companies to attract them here. And so whether it's a commercial at the Speedway, or that is related to Levi jeans, or to motorsports, or to a band that's filming a video all night long in downtown Kannapolis or Concord, or in this case, you may be aware that two very large sound stages have actually been constructed on the Philip Morris site, and since Ronnie cited some of that here, I feel good to quote him with respect to what's going on. In fact, you may not know, Woody Harrelson was in town over this, last weekend. He's one of the stars in this film that's being done. The code name that says is Artemis. You've heard about it probably as the Hunger Games, yeah. And so last weekend, there were dozens of horses and 400 extras, and 30-story tall green screens all out at the Philip Morris site, and they're filming this movie. So you wonder, well, how does that impact our community? They buy landlines for telephones, and they buy wireless service, and they go to Five Guys and a Burger, and they go to Concord Mills, and they go to Walmart, and they go to our local restaurants. And so it's not just the deal about being able to say, hey, this movie was being filmed here, but they're spending money in our local community, which we think is a great plus. And then Homeland, which is a show, series for Showtime, that got picked up, the pilot was filmed here, and Showtime liked it, so they've decided that they're going to call for more episodes, and so there's more filming that's going to be done here because of that. I think I shared with some of you, when that filming was taking place, one of the stars of the show, Claire Danes, became ill, and so the production company called us and said, we need for you to get a doctor out there right away. I volunteered to go, but no, they wanted someone real, so.
But you didn't stay at the Holiday Inn the night before.
Anyhow, so we called the hospital, and they sent the chief of staff over, and the production company was thrilled, you know, no work loss. Well, today, the production company called again. They're filming this Hunger Games, and one of the actors is sick, and so they want to know if we could call the hospital again and see if they could send a doctor out there. So they sent another doctor out there to take care of that. So, you know, you hear about these things going on in the region, you think, you know, how does that really apply to us? Well, it really does in so many ways. So I think that's pretty much the end of my report, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Cox?
I don't have a question, but since you mentioned The Hunger Games, that is.
Ma'am, you mentioned.
I mentioned Hunger Games, you're correct. It's a very good book, and it will be the book read, for the community book read.
How about that?
And it's like a five-county region that we're doing in, that the library will be doing, so there'll be a lot of things going on with that. So it'll be real interesting when the movie comes out to know that it was filmed in this area. And I keep passing my copy of the book around, so it's a good book. It's a good middle-school-level book that a lot of people, I think, will enjoy reading, but it's interesting that they're here, and exciting that they're here doing the filming.
Any questions?
The last thing that I'd offer, and it's not under the category of even official or a report, but I know that this board is facing some decisions with respect to who the five people are going to be that ultimately sit on this council, at least that's my guess in just reading the papers. So we do think that it is important that counties in America, counties in North Carolina, that want to be competitive to recruit new industry, maintain as one of the tools for recruiting new industry, the use of local incentives. They are legal, and to your point, not everything that is legal is necessarily moral, so I understand that. They're legal in all 50 states. They've been upheld by the Supreme Court, they've been upheld by the North Carolina Supreme Court, and I would hate for us to not have the opportunity to continue to negotiate with companies in good faith, to bring them here by using every means at our disposal. If we only left it to the cities, then of course, that decision is still going to be up to the company as to whether or not they'd come. But we'd like to put our best foot forward, and we think that best foot involves using incentives in appropriate and prudent ways. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Crute.
One question, or just a comment, I guess, or a challenge, and as I talked about earlier, I think if we could, I mean, just to promote in our business community, to get that, a copy of that book, and I'll get the, I don't know how we can get public signs, I can send you an email with a copy of the title of the book, but is that, you know, looking at where we were at in this community, especially like a long-time, long-term business owners or people that are involved in businesses that started from scratch in this community 50, 60 years ago, is how they did, how they did it, and how the game is different today as far as finance. And I know that our community, a lot of dollars in our community are spent that come from three major nationwide banks that have a lot of employees that live in this county, but at the same time, how do we rebuild a local financing community with our, you know, we've got a couple of local banks, but, and how do we get the business community to help to promote doing that?
So you'd like me to change the Commerce Act of 1934?
Yeah, if you could.
I'll work on that tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I think that wraps up the information that we have so far for tonight. We do, I do want to call everyone's attention that, starting on the 18th of this week through the 21st, there is going to be a slew of county commissioners coming into the county. We are hosting the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. That's a conference that's going to be at the Embassy Suites, as well as out at the arena, and they're going to be touring a lot of different places. So I don't know how many people are attending, but I think there is a very large contingency throughout all the counties in North Carolina. So I'm glad that we have that opportunity to show off the county and show off what we can do. And the theme of this year's conference is what can be done locally, local movements, and the importance of looking locally. So, and then the next is that we, our next work session meeting typically is on the first Monday of the month. Since the first Monday of September is Labor Day, it will be on September the 6th, which will be on Tuesday. Are there any comments from this board? Okay, do we have a motion to go into closed session to discuss economic development or the relocation of businesses and invite Mr. Cox, Mr. McDaniel's, Mr. Cook, do you need to be in?
Probably on this one, and also Mr. Downs.
And Mr. Downs as well. And I do not believe we need anything about threatened or pending litigation, is that correct? We don't need to go in closed session about threatened or pending litigation, or do we? Should it encompass that as well?
I would encompass that. There may be one short, very short issue.
Do we have a motion to go into closed session to discuss threatened or pending litigation and/or economic development, and inviting Mr. Cox, Mr. McDaniel's, Mr. Cook, and Mr. Downs into that meeting?
Slow move.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. After the meeting and the closed session, we'll be adjourning for our business. Thank you all very much.